What's happening, everybody? And welcome to another episode of the planning commission podcast. Today's episode, if opportunity doesn't knock, build the door with planning commission podcast listeners.
The planning commission podcast is a spirited discussion with myself and a couple of my longtime colleagues in the profession. Our discussions are based solely on our own opinions and do not reflect the opinions or views of our employers, the American Planning Association, or even our alma maters. Grab a seat in the back of City Hall. Dig out an old copy of Robert Schules and for goodness sakes, read your packet. The planning commission is now in session.
All right. How about that? First and foremost, I gotta give credit to that, that quote, it isn't mine. I'm a big quote guy. Milton Berle, man, Uncle Milty, remember that guy?
That's a throwback.
Right? I know, random thing. Google searches help that way.
If opportunity doesn't knock, build the door.
Build the door. Yeah. Eventually the opportunity will, right? So today's episode is going to be a whole lot of fun, but first and foremost, let's get our roll call commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Coster like.
Present and as one of our consulting guests today will recognize, I'm right now in proposal hell.
Oh my, you call it, I call it proposal purgatory. It's on my, my board. It's a little bit.
You're both wrong. Opportunities knocking.
Oh yeah. Yes. I'm, I'm building, I'm building a proposal door.
Are you? Or is it like an escape route?
And if nothing knocks after it, the 30 hours we put toward it'll be for naught.
Well, that's the life you've chosen. Good sir. All right. So our agenda today, our discussion item, our whiskey pairing, our interviews and our lightning round. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
You guys are real quick. Let's, let's move this along. Do they have a second? Anybody got a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dan, are you here?
I'm here. I forgot we needed a second for that. Amen. That'll be my second.
You know what? I think we should talk about Robert Schules again as a little refresher sometime. No, no.
That's always a good time. All right. For our listeners, just a reminder, go to all of our past episodes and all of our video and or audio. Go into our website, the www dot the planet commission podcast.com. You know, we're available on YouTube, Amazon, Apple and all the other ways. And as you're going to see here soon, we again, we appreciate your feedback. We always love it and give it to us some more. So thanks for that. All right, commissioners, we're going to talk today about advice, professional advice, right? And trying to give our best take on some answers from a couple of our listeners, which is so exciting to me. I'm excited about that. But I want to ask you first and foremost, what's the best professional advice you've ever had as a planner? Hmm. A lot of people have probably given it, some of it, most of it's probably been unsolicited. Right? But every now and then there's something that comes along that probably actually resonates with you. Anything come to mind?
Lead from where you are.
Lead from where you are. Okay. Take that and run with it. Elaborate. What does that mean to you? Who said it to you? When, how did it affect your career?
I had a, another, another consultant, he was an economic economist and he ran an economics consulting firm. And he said, you can always lead from where you were. I was always concerned that I wasn't like reaching that next management job or whatever it was. And, and he said, you can always lead from where you are. And then the second thing he told me when I did become a manager and I was like, oh my gosh, I have all these people above me that are, that I thought were barriers to me getting my job done. And he said, no, 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 you are the CEO of your group. And so when I started thinking about things like that, it shifted me professionally because I started thinking about, well, if you focus on what's happening right here and not worry too much about what happened in the past or what might happen tomorrow. That's future Jess's problem. If you think about what's happening in the here and now, future Jess, she got a lot of things coming her way. But right now, present Jess, this is, you can only do so much and my, I tend to get really distracted if I don't focus, but and focus is not a talent that I have. So trying to focus.
Really?
I don't listen. Hey, I'm very good at other things, but hyper focus is something I can do, but it has to be in the right environment. So yeah, it was, it was basically focus on the here and now Jess and don't worry so much about what happened or what's going to happen. It'll, it'll take care of itself.
All right. Doing the sort of the best that you can be going back to the eighties army mantra, right?
You know, you're starting to, starting to stretch me on your, on your references in the eighties. There was a time in the eighties that I was not around.
Well, Jess, when you're old, like I am, that's all you got. So, all right, Don, what do you have? What was your best advice?
Mine's much more fundamental. It was to date every document.
Thought you were going a different direction.
Mark everything is draft before it gets to final. And I swear, as I've gone through my career, the times I'm reading somebody else's stuff, I'm like, when was this document done? When was this plan updated? And here's a 200 page comp plan that you don't even know what year it was adopted because they didn't put it on the cover or in the header. And then on the, um, the date, every file and market draft, even though we now know when files are saved, but to do that kind of stuff to again, know when it was done and then marking things draft, just because one, you're not assuming it's, it's a final. And I like to tell a story of the agency I first worked with of having just completed about three years before I was there, a $1.2 million study that at that time was the largest undertaking from a consulting, non-design, you know, planning realm contract. The agency never even got a document that was marked final after it was adopted. It was still marked draft. And this was kind of the days before all the easy PDFs and things like that, but very helpful, very fundamental. But I think about that all the time.
Wow, that is very fundamental. That's, that's a very specific thing, but I can totally see we've all been there as planners. I think you're absolutely right. Doing, you know, document review or plan review, whatever. And yeah, like it's a big mystery. Have no, no real idea. So that would be a very helpful thing. And, and as a consultant to make sure, you know, like you said, just your, your own, cover your own, you know what? If you're, if you're on that side of the fence, right?
Well, and the other part with the draft, when to learn is that, and this is some inside hardball, things marked draft aren't subject to public records requests.
Ah.
So it's also a way to kind of avoid the potential scrutiny. And I mean to say that if you're trying to cover anything up, but draft documents say all kinds of things in them that never make it to the surface because it might be wrong or inappropriate or what have you.
Hmm. That's good. Well, mine was from a mentor that I had, a good friend of mine named Fred, who he lives here in the Boise area and has, he is ahead of me in life by about 20 years and was in the consulting realm for quite some time. I started off kind of young and on a committee where he was the prime consultant and we sat, one time we were going to a meeting and I started talking to him about the possibility of consulting. It was so funny. He's like, he goes, oh, it's the worst. It's just the worst. He's like, you don't want to make a living like that, you know? And he told me all these things, but he stuck with me. Well, he saved my bacon, man. Cause at one point when I started my own company, first question you could ask, well, what's your overhead rate? And he said, he asked me like, well, how are you, what's your rate? And I told him a number and he just laughed. He just completely laughed. He's, he needs just going, you have no clue, do you? And I'm probably, I'm going like, I thought that was pretty good, Fred. What's up? Sat me down with his spreadsheet and he goes, are you going to pay yourself vacation? Like, well, I guess I am now, right? Are you gonna, are you gonna pay for your insurance? Yes, Fred, of course. Now I'm going to shake head, my head up and down. But do you want to go, you know, you, you wanna, you wanna do all these other things? You want to go to a conference? What about this? What about that? And the next thing I know, my, my billing rate probably went up 250% from what I had thought originally because it finally had structure, right? And I'm telling you, I have used that same spreadsheet that he gave to me so graciously with other people. And they have had the exact same reaction because I've had that, I've been fortunate to be that mentor and sit down and say, hey, well, okay, what's your rate going to be? And then say, oh, I don't know, 20 bucks. And I'm going, you're not even close. You know, let me go through it. And it even cost me, it even cost me money on a project at one point because I had a sub consultant who I was trying to kind of pull in. And the next thing I know, I get an email. She's like, hey, uh, by the way, my rate just went from, you know, this or that. I'm going, oh crap. It actually cost me money, but it was all good.
But nothing does, nothing feels better than telling somebody like that, especially when they're young of like, no, you're charging too little. Let's, let's pay you 50%, 100% more.
Yes. Yeah. A hundred percent. You deserve more. You're educated. Let's go.
And I think, look at that. We've all three worked a little more on the corporate side of consulting. And what corporate level of consulting person is going to give that advice to a small scale sub consultant or anybody? I'm sure it's happened. I'm not saying it hasn't, but I think that's one of those thousand joys of what we do that we did on the previous episode.
Well, that's good. It's good reflection. So, all right, let's move forward to our whiskey pairing. Don, what do you got for us? On an episode all about mentoring and as I talked to earlier, if opportunity doesn't knock, build the door.
Well, as we talked about, and I think it goes with your question pretty well of like the, the best advice and stuff. And usually that comes at the early times in our career. Really nice, great, great cocktail bourbon here with early times bottled in bond, just really smooth, good hint of sweetness. Been around a long time, sometimes a little hard to find, but even for only 28 bucks for a bottle, it's certainly quality. So I'm going with the early times.
I like it. I like it. Good mixer too, right? It's got double duty on there. So, all right, before we get into our interviews, we're going to take a quick second and make sure we acknowledge our partners at Plan Edison. Jess?
Sure. So the Planet Edison, um, I'm going to start that one over. The planning commission podcast is brought to you with support from our friends at plan edison.com. So in addition to offering the daily planning news that we at the planning commission podcast have relied on for years, Plan Edison also offers a whole library of online courses made by and for planners. In fact, the planning commission podcast is happy to offer our listeners an exclusive 10% discount on a Plan Edison courses subscription. So go to courses dot plan edison.com slash PC 10 to get access to over 300 essential planning courses today.
All right. Thank you, Jess, for that. Appreciate it. Let's move into our interview with a couple of our, our, I guess we'll call them fans. Gosh, I don't know. That still sounds weird to me to say that, but I guess listeners, fans, yeah.
Let's not give them too, too much of a bucket to have to live in. Y'all don't have to be fans if you don't like it.
I'm just, I'm just happy after all the episodes and pleas of, hey, send something in. We'd love to hear it. Do that. We've actually got two on board for this. So thanks to these guys for reaching out.
Okay. So Marcus Bell and Noah Holmes Foster, first of all, thank you both for joining the planning commission podcast.
Thank you for the invite.
Yeah, thank you so much. Excited to be here.
Oh, more as happy as we are, man. I'm thrilled. So let's just start off with a little bit of introductions. Marcus, why don't you go ahead and go first? Tell us a little bit about you, your background and where you are sort of in your career. And then we'll get into a couple of your questions here momentarily.
Okay. Um, well, my name is Marcus Bell. Um, I have been interested in planning for probably about five years now, but I had no clue that planning was even a career field until maybe three years ago. I, after high school, I joined the military and the military sent me first to Guam and then they sent me to Tokyo, Japan. And Tokyo, Japan is where, really where I got my interest in planning. Um, just all the, the metro and the subway and the way that that entire system works. Um, it's just so fascinating to me and also very upsetting at the same time. Because America doesn't have anything that's even really commensurate with theirs. But looking into that is kind of what got me interested in planning. And so I, after leaving the military, I came back to America, started going to school. Um, and now that I'm about to graduate with my bachelor's, I'm about to head into a master's of urban planning at George Washington University. And just looking for how I can transition out of my military career field, which was contracting and move into a planning career field.
Awesome. Awesome. Yeah. Well, man, you've gone around the world and now it's time to, to get after it in a different career and path. And so, man, and George Washington fits quite the school and you must be proud of yourself. So awesome. That's a, that's a, that's a great path that you're on. And we can't wait to get to some of your questions here in a minute. Noah, tell us about you.
Uh, yeah. So I'm Noah Holmes Foster. Um, like, uh, Commissioner Smith, I kind of stumbled into planning from engineering. Uh, I was an engineering student, uh, and you know, an undergrad, especially, you know, change schools realized I, you know, I still wasn't that, that into it. And I was like, oh shoot, you know, I'm good at math, but I think I might want to work with people more. And eventually, uh, you know, it clicked and I, so I graduated with an undergrad degree and urban regional studies from Virginia Commonwealth University in Richmond, uh, in 2020, was thinking I was going to take a break before going back to grad school. But we all know the world took a little bit of a shift in 2020 and, uh, grad school seemed like a great opportunity. You know, that was, that was a door that, that, you know, that, that presented itself there. So, um, I finished up my, my masters of planning also at VCU, uh, last year, and I've been working for a consulting firm ever since.
Great. Yeah. A lot of people went that route during the pandemic, right? Like I might as well just keep on keeping on and.
Great time to be in school.
Yeah. Yeah. You forgot one word though, recovering engineer, right? As Chuck Maron would also agree with that.
I do, I do love me some Sean Towns.
Oh yeah. Who doesn't? Chuck and his team are fantastic.
Listen, and I'm so glad that you're still good at math because how else are you going to know those floor area ratios?
Oh, yeah. What would the world be without a floor area ratio? Oh my gosh.
A little more walkable. I'm just going to point it out.
All right. Well, so we're going to do this episode a little bit differently. Instead of us asking a lot of questions of, of our guests, they're going to ask us some questions. And so we're going to start off with Marcus. Tell us, Marcus, you have a couple of questions you want to ask of us and we're eager to get after it.
Sure. Um, so I guess I can start with my first one. Um, as I'm finishing up my bachelor's and moving into a master's of urban planning, is there anything that I should focus on in my academic career in order to maximize my education or especially in order to kind of just get me started in the planning career field?
Yeah. What do you think commissioners? These, he's making the leap going into grad school. All right. Really diving deep into the planning world. What do we think? What should we be focused on and maximize that investment?
I would say if your school isn't doing this as part of their curriculum, make your efforts, your projects look like actual plans and actual projects. And it, it gives you something that's a little marketable. Certainly you're not going to do a 200 page comp plan or something like that. But if you can do a 30 page one that looks and quacks like a regular comp plan, A, I think it's experience and B, it's something, job interviews and what have you, um, you can speak from pretty well. And I think the second one is just learn how to read a plat and zoning ordinances and all that weird stuff. And we've talked about a few times on this show of just how that wasn't even part of a graduate school curriculum. And the first time you get those things thrown in front of you, it's like, what is this stuff? And it's not always intuitive. So that's my quick one. Commissioner Danley, how about you?
Um, I would say embrace chat GPT and have it do all your work for you. Just, just go bowling. You know, get your degree and off you go. Um.
That's exactly why he sent in the question to get that one.
No, but I'll tell you that, that has been crossing my mind and like, how do we going to look at this? It's going to be a thing. And I think we'd be foolish to think that planning as a profession isn't going to be affected by this somehow, you know?
I don't have no doubt. We could probably get a better zoning ordinance from a few questions to chat D, D P, G P T or whatever than we've been able to get the last few decades.
And I've written some reports. I'm pretty sure it could have been written better by.
I was going to say, I, we've all read some that you're just like, oh, come on. It's, this is an easy one for some algorithm to write better than this nonsense, right? So the question about, you know, maximizing the education, I, I think it's two things. One, I'll, I'll, I'll take this from a instructor perspective. I've had an opportunity, as I know, Don has of, of leading some courses and teaching the class. And it's so funny, man. It's like, when I became an instructor, I guess I was, if you want to call it, you know, hard in a sense of my class wasn't easy. But I told, but I would tell my students, the first thing I'd say, listen, you are investing in me. You're, you are give, you are essentially paying me to give you information on how to do this as best as possible. I take that very seriously. So I'm going to make that, you know, a challenging thing. And I hope that you take me up on it because if you don't, then I feel like I have failed you. So as cliche as it sounds, one of my two answers is that submersing yourself as much as you possibly can on all these things and just, you know, doing a lot of the, 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 the work as, as best as you can. And again, it sounds cliche, but take, have faith that what you're being asked to do has worth and value, right? And it's not just necessarily sort of busy work or what have you. My other thing is, and this is more of a personal thing on my take as a, as a former grad student, I love, 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 love field work, you know, going out and getting your hands dirty, so to speak, and getting out of the classroom environment and actually seeing the world, you know, through this new lens that I was starting to kind of grow. And I think that if there are opportunities that you have with that, the, to me, man, the, the, the more you can spend with people, the average person with fellow, with planners that are working in the, in the career already, you know, neighborhoods, whatever it is, wherever it takes you. To me, I, I think that's a, a really great thing to take it full advantage of. Jess, you have, you hire a lot of folks, you know, out of school and you've mentioned that in past episodes. I'm curious of what your answer is going to be here.
I need you to do two things when you finish planning school. I want you to be able to use Excel. Okay. So if you're, if you're not using it in your courses, use it. I don't care if you're bouncing your checkbooks, like just do it. I need you to know how to make a pivot table. I don't know why folks are coming out of college and they, or graduate school and they don't know how to do that. Understand statistics. You're going to do existing conditions all the time. If you're a long range planner, if you're a current planner, you know, and you're working in the city at a plat encounter, you need to go get a job as a server because I need you to have the best customer service skills you've ever had in your life. So it, you know, and all of this comes down to is, is practicing what you're learning in academics. Like one of the things that happens to us when we're in school, when you're in planning school, or I was in, I mean, I have an undergrad and a graduate degree actually in engineering, but the, um, the courses were really focused on people and how they were interacting with our systems. So, um, what really pushed me forward is that I, I knew how to, yeah, I knew how to do math and then I, but I knew how to do statistics and I understood data. And that is huge. So we were talking about chat, 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 GPT. The other big thing that's happening in planning is we have, and big, big data has been around for a long time. But, um, data analysis and interpretation is a huge thing that we're doing in planning, especially in the bigger the project, the more data that ends up being there. And I would love to have students coming out of school that know how to interpret data, looking at it and pulling it and interpreting. I'll teach you how to analyze it. Help me interpret it. You know, why do these numbers matter? Why did we pull this? So asking yourself why over and over again. So don't forget your math skills. Come to work with them. And I think the other thing is, is take some courses outside of planning. Take some English courses, take, take a, take a, take a, um, a class that, that sounds like it doesn't fit in your, in your curriculum, especially in grad school and go talk your professor into why it matches in with your program. There's a lot like, like, uh, developing a custom program is so in, in grad school. So if there's something you think you can swap out for a course over in the architecture school, if you have that access, do that, you know, go and take a course in economics, go take, take a course in the business school. If you can do that in your graduate program, oh my gosh, it's so fun because you get to see your world through other people's lens. And the more that you can do that, the better planner you're going to be because being a planner that knows how planning is supposed to work versus one that can make, that can work in their community, you're, you're going to, you've just got to navigate all kinds of different walks of life. And so go and experience that, um, and do it with your education and your reading and your classes.
Your Excel comment reminded me, I was thinking about saying know how to find and, and get and download census data.
Yes, please do.
Yeah. But the problem is if, however, you're accessing it in June, 2023, the census bureau is going to change the platform by October and you have to relearn it again. So that's why I didn't go with that advice. Yes.
You know, I'd love to have that downloaded.
I'd love to have that consulting contract redo the format and platform for census data every three months. So nobody else can track it.
I'll throw out one more quick one and then we'll move on to the next question. But, um, I, you know, and to Jess's point, I, I think she's got a great point there in the politics of things too. Of, you know, my goodness, they don't really talk about that too much of, of how to, how do local politics work? Because you could have the best plan in the world, but the implementation is largely not up to you, right? The implementation may very well be up to a planning zoning commission, a city council, you know, a strong city manager or something like that. So understanding the dynamics that happen within either a city or DOT, state government, whatever that is, you know, or private sector, right? Well, how does what you're trying to do in, as a planner actually get implemented by a, a company, a construction company or development company? For example, those are all things that, you know, you're going to need to know somehow, at, at least in order to be an effective planner later on. So, um, yeah.
You know what? I'm so jealous of Chris.
What?
Is Don's background in political science. I, that is the one world that I didn't, I never ventured into in academics. And so I was really hit hard when I had to go work for municipality. Oh my gosh. It's, it's great. No, I mean, figure it out. It's, it's really important, especially the.
And we're, we're, yeah. And we're, I think all three of us are still in that. We're still, every community we go into and do a project for, you have to know those politics almost immediately. And what, so you know what landmines not to step on? Who are the players, right? Who are the movers and shakers? Who are the disruptors and that kind of a thing? And what is the, what is the language that you need to either say or avoid in order to, you know, totally blow up your project? So, yeah.
Marcus didn't understand maybe what he was asking. He asked us to give our opinion. I don't know if you've heard this.
We're good at just bloviating. So this is our.
I would say Marcus, which of, which of those relates to you most or think is mirror, which one maybe you've already been pursuing and learned something from? So other listeners can learn.
Um, I think actually you've all kind of said something that has been extremely helpful, um, or something that I can relate to already. My current career field, I already do a lot of Excel. Um, I do a lot of Excel and a lot of pivot tables. So I think I already said on.
Skip grad school. Come to Alaska. We will hire you right now.
Thank you. Um, I think I've also lucked out just because my bachelor's is actually in political science. It's, it's Washington DC. So it's, it's, it's a political city. It's all political science. Um, I'm definitely going to try to take advantage of as many classes as I can. While I'm at the school, uh, the.
I mean, take a break and go to a sports ball game, but like, you know.
Absolutely. Yeah. Um, the current classes that I'm signed up for right now are, I, I know it's principles of, of urban planning, which is, I know it's a lot of reading. It's going to be like Jane Jacobs, which, um, I've already read fortunately and, um, a couple of other books that I, I hope I've already read, uh, just to get a little bit of a, a head start. And then, um, just from the political aspect, one of the other classes is a justice, equity, diversity and inclusion class, which has helped me with some of the more humanistic aspects of planning. So I'm looking forward to those classes and learning as much as I can.
I want, I want to know what you learned after that class. And I'm really glad that they put the word justice in there.
Well, I was going to say, I'll take things they didn't teach us in graduate school 20 years ago for 500 Alex, because that was nice. Shows, I think it shows the adaptability of the planning school curriculum and the professors in that. And was even just hearing a thing at a conference I was at the other day of how in some other areas, they don't feel that, you know, university curriculum are adapting fast enough. So yeah, I think that's really good to hear. Noah, what would you give advice to for Marcus? You're on the consulting side now and maybe fresher in that. What would you suggest?
We're assuming you educated yourself somewhere.
Oh yeah. Uh, so I would, I would definitely tell you network like it's your job.
Oh yeah, that too.
There are, you know, Richmond is, you know, a much smaller city than, than DC. But you know, even just in, in my experience, I'd just say, you know, okay, this class did, uh, you know, a study for this city in Virginia. And, you know, keep following up with that person or, you know, you're going to have professors that seem to have, you know, been alive for hundreds of years and met millions of people. And don't be afraid to ask, um, you know, that, that's how I'm in the position I am now. You know, one of my professors is like, oh, you should really talk to so and so. And then that so and so happened to post, post a job listing. And I was like, okay. Yeah.
I like it. That's a good point. Networking. So.
Oh my gosh, he's so smart. He's like, go get a job, you know, and maybe talk to people.
Marcus, why don't you hit up your, your second question and then we'll get Noah involved. Marcus, why don't you hit up your, your second question and then we'll get Noah involved in some of his.
Okay. Um, so also do you have any advice on how I can take my currently 10 years of experience as a contract specialist, uh, writing and reviewing RFPs and RFQs and all those other documents? Oh, I know there's like a, a acronym, request for proposals, request for quotes, um, and transition into the planning field. Um, particularly if as right now I'm interested in transit oriented development, but I've also read, um, the Paralec book, the missing middle housing. So I'm also very interested in development oriented transit. Um, so however I can transition into planning would be, um, from contracting would be, uh, some good advice to hear.
So how do we go from RFPs and RFQs into TODs? Right? And, and, and working potentially for a transit agency or as a land use planner spoke, you know, especially specializing in TOD on behalf of the city.
Well, there's the other part of it that I call POT, parking oriented transit. So we can say POT is legalized in most states because of that. Um, I would say that the cool part about that, the thing that came to mind when I saw it was if you're knowing contract language and that, and you're thinking about TOD especially, and even the housing side, real estate law, real estate contracts. And I think a lot of times in the planning profession, and Chris says is a lot, you know, we deal a lot in the humanities, but we could also learn a lot more of the technical side. And knowing what goes into making a development pencil out, what a developer or a real estate person is really looking for in that. I think a lot of times we'll just kind of make the plan. And here's the, the maps with the different colors around a TOZ, TOD. And, you know, maybe that's not going to pencil out in the end. So that would, that would be mine. I think that's a, a great skill to have because contracting is so, so very specialized. And so much of that nuanced language is, is right in there with real estate development.
Yeah. I, I would jump in here and I would say, and I think Noah just kind of touched on it. I, I, I think you'd be a, a, a dream of an intern at your local transit authority, you know, or, or the city, if there's an opportunity and if it's not, I don't know, bust through the door and force it on them because I think that they'll probably take you up on it. My point being is that if you're somebody who has, you're in grad, you're going to be in grad school. You've been doing this, you know, part of this procurement world, right? And you're obviously incredibly capable and a hard worker. Why would they say no? Why would they in a world say no to at least allowing you to come in, be exposed to that world a bit, you know, and, and start to spread your wings a little bit more. Cause I think you'd probably be able to frankly, just walk in the dang door after, uh, uh, after a couple of years of grad school and you're done, I think it would be a shoe in. You know, heck, we could introduce you to some folks down in Jacksonville who happened to be the head of, of transit, right? That might be an opportunity.
I got, I got the people in Orlando. So.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I think, and the people in Anchorage, but I, but not that you want to move to live. We've already had the conversations. It's too cold. But I think, I think where, you know, all of us are kind of saying, go work for an agency because in an agency, um, and, and this is kind of my question for you. Are you interested in being a technical expert? Or do you have a passion for working on the public side in an agency capacity? Because in the agency capacity, boy, that contracts, it's, it's just a, it's just a little, it's like, I, I, I can, I'm already knocking out the thing that they were going to teach you on the job, right? And so, um, if, if that's where you, your heart is, being an agency, um, person is going to be a, a great fit for you with that background. It's an added value on your resume. But if you want to be a technical expert and you want to go work for a, a place like, um, I'm thinking about Nelson Nygaard or somebody who they do transit work and that's all they do and they're experts in a very, you know, in this narrow area. Um, that's going to be a very different world. And I think that what you have to caution yourself is realizing, yeah, that networking is really important. And also what do they want to see from you? To hire you as an entry level planner? What do they want to see in a transit planner to become that technical expert? Cause I think that that's what's, um, you're, the fact that you have experience in the work world is always great. I, I love it when folks come in and they've been working any other job for any period of time, right? But if, if you want to be a technical expert, you are literally shifting into something completely different. Your contracts management development is great because you're going to have to deal with that on a private side. If you become, if you go into one of these companies where you're an expert all the time, um, and that'll be helpful later. But for the most part, they're going to need to hire you to, to be a techie, right? So that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm not sure. I think, I, like they're saying, one of your best bets is going to be working in agency. And I always recommend that people work both in agency and in private sector, kind of depending, unless your heart is just lives in agency and you just want to do that forever, which is, which is beautiful. But I get, I get squirrely. I move back and forth.
Plus you can pick your own poison in grad school in terms of if you want to go down the transportation world, go down the transportation world. You want to do your capstone or thesis on TOD, go do it. And you guess, the next thing you know, you're starting to build your academic resume. And then you go interview people who are in that wet realm in grad school and you're opening the door for yourself through your own academic pursuits. You know, that might be another way to, to get after it. So. Anything else to add? I think we can jump into Noah here. Noah, you got a couple of questions you want to ask us?
Yeah, thank you. So I've been really blessed in this first year out of school. You know, one of the great things about consulting is you, you know, depending on the firm, you can do a lot of different projects. So I've, you know, worked on comprehensive plans, zoning ordinances, downtime revitalization plans. Um, you know, studies, you name it. Um, but my, my true passion, I think is and always will be, um, active transportation. And, you know, as, as some individuals, um, you know, if you really have kind of got your foot in the door of, you know, bike, pet, ADA planning, um, you know, what are, what are some of your recommendations for that?
Move to another country. Oh, I'm sorry. That came out of my mouth.
Valid.
I mean, I mean, it, it, I, I say that, but I, but also it's one of these things. Move to a city that you love so much that you're willing to put the next 20 years into making it a better place. I think, I think that that is one thing that I wish all planners would think about. And, and I want you to love it in a way that you love it now and you love what it could be. Don't just love the potential because there are so many moving parts and there's a lot of people around that don't think the way that, that, that you may be thinking about how quote a city should be. So go someplace that you love living already and see if you can make it better. Unless you just, I mean, again, if you're somebody that feels like you can, you can start from scratch and really, you know, spend the next, it's, it's just a really slow ship to move. Um, so, and, and there is nothing more frustrating than a planner that comes in and starts to tell the community the way their community should be from their quote, like, you know, planner, great gift of knowledge about how a city should work, you know, because we have cities in America that, you know, those of us that really value certain things would go, I'm, don't want to live there because it looks like this. Or if I went in there, I'd want to change all these things, but there are people that live there because of the way that the city is. So I think that that's what I would focus on is making sure that you're somewhere that you love it so much. I'm not saying you have to love everything, but you love it so much that you're dedicated and you're, and you're, you're not going to, you're not going to be there for three years and be like, I'm out, nothing happened. It's not going to happen in three years.
Hey Noah, quick question is to clarify, do you want to stay in consulting or do you want to look to the public sector?
Well, either or.
That'd be a hard question to ask on the public internet, Chris.
No. Yeah. So I, I was lucky enough to, to intern for the town of Jackson, Wyoming, not too far from you, um, out of Idaho. Um, and I loved it. I mean, and they had, you know, some, some people, you know, doing trip, bike, pet trail stuff that, you know, I thought it was awesome, but I will say the one thing that scares me a little bit on, about trying to pursue that on the public sector side, it's just that, you know, currently, uh, a city, county, town might have one person, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Well, I would say.
A funding did go back and refund the, um, didn't they, they went back and refunded safe routes to school coordinators in all the states.
There we go.
Pretty sure that happened.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to throw you a curve ball here and I, you know, number one, there's two things I, I come to mind. One is right now we live in a, in a time when it's pretty easy to educate yourself in this realm. You're right. There's so many dang, um, webinars and all the training, online stuff. It, it's out there. Planet isn't, our own partner has courses that you can educate yourself on and, and sort of bone up on this and, and really be stronger about it. But I, I'm going to throw you a curve ball because you know where the bodies are buried. And what I mean by that is your experience in zoning ordinances, for example, well, you are giving the DNA to how things are going to get built by knowing zoning ordinances, right? So some other planner could come in and suggest that they know all the best design features of how to make a place walkable. But if they don't understand the zoning piece of it and how things are being implemented through the public or private sector rather, they're missing the opportunity. So you actually have a leg up in a sense because of the things that you're doing with comp plans, downtown revitalization and so forth. I would almost re, you know, sort of, um, reverse engineer this a little bit and say, you have a lot of skill here. We just have to get you on the design side to understand, but you know, you know, again, sort of going back to that DNA component. Don, what do you have?
Well, my thought was related to that because just what you listed, comp plan, zoning ordinances, downtown revitalization plans. And I get it, you're in a consulting firm, so you're doing utilization. You got to meet a project budget. Maybe you find the way to even offer extra time. I, I'll give you an example. We just see this a lot in zoning ordinances and we'll ask people this in our walkability trainings. Does your zoning ordinance stipulate different sidewalk widths for different land uses? And oftentimes the answer to that is no. All right. Well, why do we need a 10 foot sidewalk in a downtown and a five foot one in an industrial area? So why do we do five feet everywhere? Even within a comp plan, I would say the transportation chapters tend to be weaker than most because we've probably done other transportation plans, but being able to take, um, all these federally endorsed design guides, because it's so rapidly evolving and compiling them into appendix as reference. I think a lot of planners, especially the one person shops you mentioned, don't even know that all that stuff is out there. And if all they're getting is something from their DOT or somebody like that, they're probably not going to know that information. So I think those are some easy ways. Uh, your, your question really struck me because the reason I got into bike, pet and ADA was because I was a planner with a little bit of an engineering background, working in a highway agency. And our long in the tooth engineers didn't want to mess with a sidewalk gap project or ADA transition plan. They wanted the big ribbon cutting projects and I just jumped into it and, and said, that's what I want to do. And ironically, and I know this is your next question, that's what, you know, lit that passion in me to do what we do.
So Marcus, I'm just curious, real quick, you're, you're kind of dabbling in the same area. Um, maybe a little bit different with TOD, but there's obviously some tremendous parallels here. So I'm curious, do you have anything to add to, to Noah's question on that? Anything that you can, that comes to your mind?
Um, not off the top of my head, no. Um, I, I am very interested in the, the active transportation aspect of transit oriented development. I mean, I am lucky enough to live about a five minute walk away from my, uh, metro, but I do, I have lived about 20 minutes walk away or a five minute bike ride away from the metro. So, um, I have an interest in, in looking at how that transit oriented development can, I guess, be incorporated into a further act of transportation.
Yeah, fair enough. Well, and they're, they're, they're totally related, right? You're not going to have TOD without walking or biking and, you know, the walking and biking piece is fed by TOD. So there's definitely some overlap there, no doubt about that. So, okay. Noah, what's your other question for us before we head to the lightning round?
Yeah. So, you know, I was talking about my, my passion, which is, you know, largely active transportation. And so, you know, what are your, your recommendations for, you know, trying to pursue uh, your path and whatever it might be, um, in the planning profession, when it might not seem super straightforward?
Lead from where you are. I mean, it, you know, it, it does go, it does go back to, um, I think thinking about where you're at Noah. And, and there's, there's this model of kind of thinking about where you are and, and, and it's this grow model and G is goals, R is reality, O is opportunity and W is what will you do? So if you think about what your goals are, the, the next step is to say, okay, what is the reality of where I am? What is my effort? What do I know? What is my education? Do I need to, do I need to figure out more information? Do I need to be more, um, educated? Do I need a training? Do we need a certification? I'm not saying you need any of those things to go into active transportation. Um, those are, those are just some, some things. Sometimes your passion has driven you to be so engaged and have so much knowledge that you just think it, it's not marketable because no one's paid you to do it yet. Don't think that way. If you know something, if, if you were that engaged, you probably know more about how to do an act, how to plan for active transportation in a system or in a city, um, than you realize, right? And it's such a field that has, um, been largely ignored for so long. And it's been the last 10 or 15 years that it's really come out in the forefront as something, um, that are specialists. So people that are specialists in active transportation, they're not necessarily, or whatever your passion is, they may have found this before anybody was paying anybody to do it, right? So if you want to follow your passion and get paid for it, start telling people what you know and what you're interested in, but don't give that away for free is one thing because you got to eat. But, but also, I mean, also don't let your passion, um, burn you, right? So it's also okay to work a job and then have your passion somewhere else. I think that sometimes when we try to mix the two, it can really burn you out quickly.
And there we have the life coach hour with Commissioner Smith.
Yes, use the grow model. It's wonderful.
What I would say, you know, and just knowing where you are, go volunteer, well, i- if, if Richmond or the Metropolitan Planning Organization has a bike, pet advisory committee, just go start attending those because you know what? Not that many people attend those. And eventually you'll be the warmest body in the room and they'll want somebody to be on that. Those things are not hard to be involved with, get on board.
Put your application in.
Yeah. Go do things like get your League of American bicyclist cycling instructor and do bike rodeos and, and volunteer on that side. And, and when those things start to happen, that's also stuff that makes your consulting firm be more competitive with your skillset. Cause you're getting outside the realm and, and getting into more programmatic and other things. So that's my short advice.
I love this question and I'm going to give you something of a, a totally different way of looking at it. I think I, I'm a big believer that a big piece of planning is selling. You are selling a vision. You are selling an alternative built environment that you believe is necessary to achieve the types of things that a community or the residents or whomever is saying they want. Can you sell it? Can your passion captivate the people in front of you? If you're in a room and you're the one that's with passion, you're the planner with passion and you love what you do and you believe in what you're doing because you're knowledgeable, right? And you're relatable. It's going to be completely obvious and the people in that room and the people that you're in front of, whomever, wherever that is, are going to say, I don't know about that guy, but I'm following him into, you know, wherever he takes us. Because that is, I believe, a huge component of, of a good, successful planner is being able to sell that vision, man. And so i- if you are, are not all that captivating and just kind of go along to get along, that passion is going to just sit in the back burner and, and eventually die out. So, but if you're the alternative, you love this, you, you know it and you can get those people to see what you want them to see. I think that passion will come to the forefront and, and it'll take you places that you never thought of. So be prepared to sell.
Love that. Thank you.
All right.
A former cut code knife selling specialist right there too. Uh, uh, and a horrible one at that. Um, but nevertheless, I did, I did learn some sales things later in life that have still to this day been helpful. So in our last few minutes, we're going to turn to the lightning run. Hopefully that's been a helpful dialogue, um, to the two of you, Marcus and Noah, but anybody who's listening. Um, we hope that our, our experiences have, have advanced the ball a little bit and we're still learning, right? I mean, we're, you know, we're still doing our thing, but, but let's turn to our lightning round and have a little bit of question. I'm going to ask a question and the both of you can answer it, um, and, and we'll go from there. So I want to know worst place you've ever vacationed? Don't be afraid to name names.
Wow. Worst place? Uh, it wasn't necessarily a vacation as much as it was a, a, a temporary duty assignment that I had in an alter, but, um, San Diego.
Wow.
I, I like San Diego.
Just right to the gun.
The city. I do like San Diego. I was upset at the fact, and, and kind of just California in general, I guess, because I've also been to LA. But, and I actually. But, and I actually prefer the west coast to the east coast, but. It, to me, it just seems like it could have so much better public transportation. Um, I'm, I, I don't mean to like bring it into a completely like a planning thing, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Going from Tokyo and going to California, I was like, they should have much better public transportation, especially.
Yeah, fair enough. Noah?
Uh, again, vacation might be a threat, but I've spent a lot of more time than I should have been in middle of nowhere, New Jersey. Family events, you know, I have extended family around there, but then I ended up going another time that summer. Because someone decided that's where we were going to go for our grandmother's birthday. Would not recommend.
Very good. It, well, it's the garden state. So how, how can that be bad?
Jess, Don, what do you got?
And maybe this is more relatable to Marcus or no, than Noah. What's your favorite DC metro line?
I'm on the red line. It connects to the other lines very simply. The, it's, it's the best line to me.
Noah, any preferences on the DC thing or, or you got your own perspective on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I want to say, does the green line go to Nationals Park that right? But whatever.
If it was the green line.
Whatever line goes around there because I, uh, I really appreciate that, uh, DC United's new stadium out of field is like. Kind of transit oriented, uh, it's still a bit of a hike, but definitely love that.
You can at least get there.
Very good. All right. What's your go-to karaoke song or a song that comes on the radio that you cannot not sing?
Um, having spent a lot of time in Japan singing a lot of karaoke, everyone who has heard me sing karaoke will know that my go-to is. The thong song by Cisco.
That is exactly what we thought. Exactly. The thong song.
Now, this is the advice we're getting and needing because now I've got to go out something I'm not familiar with. I've only heard of it. So.
It's a, yeah, it's Americana classic. I think they're cap, they're capturing that in the Smithsonian, if I'm not mistaken, right? Noah, what's yours? Can you beat the thong song?
God, there's, there's probably not any, any beating it, but, um. I am not your standard Lizzo fan, um, demographically, but, uh. I, about damn time.
Do it.
It's about the catchiest thing I've ever heard and never gonna, gonna hear it and not want to sing along.
So just saying that, when you're, when you're switching into active transportation, you get that first job, you start singing that thing.
I say I, I'm, I'm a little deflated. Noah's from Richmond, which is the hometown of my favorite metal band, Lamb of God. So.
Nobody. Yeah, yeah.
Nobody actually likes watching baseball. I'm going to point that out. Okay. So best fried chicken, where do we find it?
Ooh, best fried chicken?
Yes, come on.
We've established on this show through plenty of questions that Nashville hot chicken is not a thing, never was, it's totally fabricated. So we've got kind of an underlying theme of that on the food side.
Um, I'm going to go ahead and hit against DC. I have not found good fried chicken in DC. Yes, being from Texas, uh, the fried chicken in Texas, uh, if, if you can go to any of the. Larger kind of barbecue areas, those, those will typically have better fried chicken, but I can't think of a, a restaurant, just like off the top of my head.
I don't personally eat meat, but shout out. Shout out Richmond Lee's famous chicken though. It's, it's awesome. It's right on, uh, the BRT line. And on their, their screen, um, their LED sign, uh, every now and then it says be bike friendly, share the road. So shout out.
I gotta say one thing just from kind of hearing you speak, Noah, you've spoken about this location next to a BRT line. You've talked about, you know, getting to a, uh, the DC United games via transit. And then same thing for you, Marcus, with San Diego. If you didn't listen to our episode of, about transit and planners telling people to ride transit with never. Without ever having ridden transit. Problem in the profession. I think both of you have already overcome that. So.
Very good, very good. All right. Well, with that, we're going to call this episode done. So if opportunity doesn't knock, build a door. We want to give a special thought out to, to Marcus Bell and Noah Holmes Foster. We really appreciate you guys both jumping on and asking us questions. We appreciate it. Um, any other listeners out there? You got questions? Look what could happen. You might end up being on our show.
For the two of you, one, thanks for reaching out. I, the networking thing is huge.
Yeah, for sure.
Hesitate to reach out to us for anything, uh, on that front. I know we, we all like providing others with other information. Cause it improves all these communities and all these places.
All right. To our listeners, reminder, www dot theplanningcommissionpodcast.com. Check it out. Hit us up. And we look forward to future interactions with all of you. So fellow commissioners, I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All right. Thank you all for joining us. We'll see you soon. Hey everybody, Commissioner Danley here. Would you like to see more, hear more? Well, we've got you covered. Go to our website, www dot theplanningcommissionpodcast.com. It's got everything you want. Guests, yep, past episodes, video, the audio, even our whiskey pairing. Links to everything about all the people we've had on, books, websites, you name it. It's unbelievable. You want to reach out to us, please. We'd be more than happy to chat. You can email us, planningcommissionpodcast@gmail.com. You want to tweet at us, go for it, at planning commish. We're also on YouTube with the planning commission podcast channel. Facebook, heck, send us a carrier pigeon if you need to. We'd love to hear from you about ideas, guests, you name it. Thank you for listening. We appreciate it. We'll keep doing our thing. You keep doing yours. Have a good one.